Time is 6:02 PM and I hereby call this meeting to order. We have the presence of a quorum and the meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has posted for, has been posted for the time and manner required by law. I'm going to ask all of you to stand and join us for our presentation of colors by the Cub Scout Pack 1115, which will be followed by our pledges of allegiance and the National Anthem. Color Guard sent in, audience salute. Color Guard advance. Color Guard, hold the colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in the Texas flag.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Two. Color Guard retreat. Color Guard hold. Color Guard dismiss. Please remain standing for the singing of the National Anthem.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you to the Kempner High School Choir for that beautiful rendition of the National Anthem. Thank you to Cub Scout Pack 1115 for the presentation of colors. Let's give them a round of applause. And for our students from Barrington Place who said the pledges of allegiance, Kiara McNew, Sidney Wiley, Dustin Rhodes, and Gavin Rhodes. Let's give them a round of applause. Thanks to all of our students for being here and participating with us this evening. First up on our agenda this evening is our information items. We're going to start with an update on the profile of a graduate implementation. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, Madam President. Earlier this year, the Board adopted the profile of a graduate that has since been incorporated into policy and now governs all of the work and is the foundation of our mission and vision for the district. So, we're going to give you an update today on what we're doing to create awareness and communicate about the profile of a graduate and our plans to implement and roll it out in a very deep way during the coming few years. I'll turn it over to our Chief Academic Officer. I'm Deanna Sevedra.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, and Dr. Dupree. We are pleased to bring you an update on the rollout for the profile of the graduate. Tonight's report will be presented by Troy Byrne, our Executive Director of Transformational Learning, and as Dr. Dupree indicated, he will share the recent work associated with the profile of a graduate and talk about the project plan for the creation of the grade level standards for each attribute that will be embedded into the curriculum during the coming year. So, Troy, will you take us from there?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Board Members, and Dr. Dupree. Thank you for allowing us to present the profile of a graduate this evening. At its core, incorporating the profile of a graduate into the culture of Fort Bend ISD through academics, extracurricular activities, and community engagement is key to the success of this initiative. In tonight's report, we will share how the district will identify, create, promote, and implement grade level standards for each of the seven critical attributes identified in the profile of a graduate. These grade level profile standards will allow district personnel to build capacity within our students so that they may graduate truly proficient within each of the seven attributes. We will start tonight's report with the recent work on the profile of the graduate and close our report with our project plan for creation of profile grade level standards. The profile of a graduate is the platform that drives our work from the boardroom into the classroom. It was important to create the profile of an FBISD graduate so that we plan with the end in mind. This planning is student-focused and aligned with what internal and external stakeholders believe are the critical attributes a graduate should possess. The Vision and Planning Committee drafted the profile of a graduate from the words and phrases provided by parents and students and the information generated during district team-building exercises. The draft profile was reviewed and feedback was gathered from the teacher forum, principals, student leadership, parents, and other stakeholders. Feedback from all the stakeholder groups was synthesized to make additional edits to the profile prior to submitting it for Board approval in January 2017. The profile of a graduate was formally introduced in a broader sense at the 2017 convocation when the attributes were brought to life through our students and staff and their stories and performances. Since then, we have threaded the profile of a graduate in nearly every communication we send out, be it through the superintendent's message, district tweets, magazine articles, district videos, community events. While we build out the profile standards, we will continue to highlight the profile through our students' successes. The same expectation to highlight the profile of a graduate was communicated to campus administrators to have students and staff continue to make natural connections from their work to the seven critical attributes of the profile. To move the work on the profile of a graduate forward, the Profile Task Force will be created. The Profile Task Force will use the research and work from the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, also known as CASL, to begin the creation of grade level standards for each of the seven critical attributes found in the profile of a graduate. CASL has worked with states and districts nationwide to identify social emotional standards, or soft skills as we call them, that students should have in order to be successful in their personal lives and the workforce. Working with CASL, groups ensure that standards exist starting in early childhood and scale up to the high school level. Beyond creating and scaffolding standards, CASL's work also defines student behavior indicators, student activities, and levels of student proficiency to assist educators to assess students' progress. By being intentional with the creation of the grade level standards, behavior indicators, and student activities for the seven critical attributes of the profile, the district will be able to measure students' progress in meeting these standards and recognize students in their accomplishments. Once the profile grade level standards have been created, the task force will embed them within current curriculum using natural connections. Setting profile grade level learning standards is critical to communicating the idea that the profile of the graduate is the core mission of Fort Bend ISD with clear connections made in classrooms every day. So, here on the screen, we see a sample sequence from our English Language Arts curriculum, and these teacs specifically speak to students, to characters in stories, and how those characters interact with each other, what their motivations are, and what conflicts may occur within the storyline. Down below, this is a possible example of what we can create through the profile standards. Here, we see that students are recognized, the feelings and perspectives of others, or empathy as we would call it. And what we want to do is find natural connections in our current core curriculum and the profile standards that we will build out so that we're not giving teachers an additional thing to teach. It's embedded in what we're teaching already. Just to help us see, because I know that this writing is real itty-bitty, I pulled out for a seventh grade middle school, students should analyze the development of the plot through internal and external responses of the characters, including their motivations and conflicts, and it makes a natural connection to this possible standard that we create, analyzing how one's behavior may affect others. This is what the work with the task force will be to find these natural connections once the standards are built. The Profile Task Force will establish guidance for teachers and administrators in supporting student learning, as with new curriculum, tools and resources specific to teaching the profile will be developed. The vertical progression and alignment of these standards will be designed to increase capacity within our students to master the seven critical attributes prior to graduation. The final products of the Profile Task Force will be the creation of student learning products and processes. These tasks, the task force will scale up student learning from early childhood through their senior year. Within our curriculum in Schoology, we're using this Reg Badge icon that you can see up here to indicate a link to the profile of a graduate. This already exists in our curriculum and we're already building those connections. Here's an example showing how the task force might design student demonstrations that connect to literacy, the literacy curriculum at this point. Through scaffolding of the grade level profile standards, students will progress along a continuum or learning progression as they become more proficient with each critical attribute. Here, we see an example that could serve as a learning progression for servant leadership, moving students from merely articulating their perspectives and their opinions and moving them towards directing and planning activities on the campus and within their community. The charge of the task force will be to build out each progression along to measure, each progression to measure students' growth associated with these attributes. It is important that we recognize student achievement. When students are given positive feedback and are rewarded for a job well done, it's only natural for them to continue to work hard and do their very best. Even the slightest positive student recognition does wonders for a child's morale and enthusiasm about schoolwork and their outlook on school. Student recognition also builds strong relationships among students, teachers, families, and the community, helping to create a positive school culture where students feel valued. The Profile Task Force will be charged with creating a badging system similar to what we see with our Scouts today. The process of creating a badge will involve the creation of learning experiences where these badges can be earned, creation of the badges to represent the seven critical attributes within the profile of a graduate framework, and identifying timelines for awarding these badges upon a successful completion of badge criteria. This system of recognition would be ongoing, promoting the continuous development of the profile attributes within our students. Here, we see a Gantt chart showing the build-out of the project. We've already completed the drafting and project scoping phase, and we're currently in resource development. The task force, the Profile Task Force, is being gathered right now as we speak. We're identifying members that could be on that task force. They will start Phase One, Phase One build-out this November and December to define the critical virtues for each of the seven profile attributes. They'll identify resources, collect feedback from stakeholders to determine two priority profiles. So, Phase One will be the complete build-out of two of the seven attributes to start our work. January and February will continue development of the curriculum and begin development of the student recognition system, development of the learning progressions, learning intentions, and success criteria for two of those priority traits. The task force will also work on any possible finances that would need to be talked about in the March-April timeline as we determine budget for the next school year. Communications will also roll out during this time, and Phase One will launch in August 2018. The Profile Task Force will continue building grade level standards for the remaining critical attributes. Phase Two will be a full implementation of the profile grade level standards within classrooms in 2019-20. Our chair for this task force will be Dexter McCoy. He's here in the audience today. He's our specialist for student leadership and engagement. We also have two co-chairs. I don't know if they're here tonight, but Dana Cox from Teaching and Learning, I believe I saw her this evening, she's working one of the tables outside, and Tracy Vanwright from Innovation and Continuous Improvement. The first meeting for the task force will be this November 29, 2017. The creation and implementation of grade level profile standards embedded within our core curriculum provides a means for Fort Bend ISD to develop our students to graduate equipped with skills for life, becoming servant leaders, effective communicators, critical thinkers, compassionate citizens, collaborative team members, and lifelong learners. Madam President, Board Members, Dr. Dupree, thank you for allowing us to present an update on the district work with the profile of a graduate. I will take questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. We appreciate you being here with that presentation. This is very exciting, I know, for Board Members as we start rolling this out. So, thanks for all your work and the work of the team. Questions from the trustees, Ms. Helliger.
Thank you so [BLEEP]. One of my sweet spots right here. I'm just enjoying the progression of this particular plan. So, I am excited to see the implementation plan that you all have put together and really for us to kind of succinctly put together, see when things are going to actually get completed. I did, I want to make sure that we're not misleading people with one of the statements that you made. It could have been just me, I heard it, but I know better. I just want to make sure I repeat it. So, we're collecting badges, right? The students would be able to get the badges, but it's not optional. That's where I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. So, when I think of a Boy Scout, because you used the analogy of the Boy Scout, that's why I wanted to come back to it. You know, the Boy Scouts has a book of a whole bunch of badges that they can collect. They don't have to do all of them, but there are certain ones that they have to do now. So, when I think of this, there's, you know, at the different levels, if you go back to one of the pages, there's several ways to implement a particular attribute. Forward, please.
This, forward?
Forward.
Oh, forward.
So, I assume this means, you know, the different ways that they can actually learn the particular skill or the attribute, right, of the profile for the graduate.
What you see up there is really a progression of what would be the early stages of an attribute look like in terms of, you know, defining the behaviors? And then on the other end of the spectrum, you see the word leadership. So, we would want kids to progress from expression all the way to leadership in that area to demonstrate their mastery of that particular attribute.
Okay. So, then the expression's probably more in our younger children, you know, and then it kind of graduates up, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, to me, the badge is not optional. It's just not. So, every student, when they finish, they have all their badges done. And what happens if, I'm going to pick on my own child, because Alex doesn't do what he needs to do, and so no one's monitoring that? Is it up to me to monitor? Is it up to the parent to monitor? I mean, excuse me, I am the parent. Is it up to the parent to monitor? Is it up to, I'm a trustee too, I wear a couple hats. Is it up to a court teacher in that particular grade to monitor? How does that work? Because at the end of the year, when we shaking hands across the stage, every last student needs to have every last one of those badges. I don't know how you're going to display it, if it's just digital, or there's a court or something like that, but how are we going to do that?
Well, I think that's part of the work that the task force is going to engage in is to really build out that system and look at what are the different systems that we're going to build in the curriculum so that we can work through that process. Similar to what we would do in a classroom when we have a learning progression, we've got learning experiences associated with that learning progression, and we also have metrics on how we determine how kids are progressing with their learning. We would want to do the same thing, which is one of the reasons why we want to embed that in the curriculum so that it's something that's fluid and it's part of the process and the way we educate our students as part of the whole child, not necessarily just in the academic. So, that's why we want to find all of those natural connections within the curriculum. But that really will be a lot of the work that the task force will be building as they work to develop that recognition system.
Let me, I'd like to interject though, because I want to cue in Ms. Helliger to what you're saying. I think all the work that Deanna and Troy are describing is the work that needs to be done at this point in time. But I also want to bridge back to what, because if you think back to what the term we use in education blooms taxonomy, expression would be a student can say, "This is the fact." But as they move along the progression, they begin to be able to apply the fact, to synthesize it, and actually work with it in a tangible, meaningful way. We don't want our students in math, English, science, or social studies to just say the facts. We want them to be able to apply them. So, that's what this is showing, from expressing the attribute to being able to lead in that attribute, to demonstrate it. But as we do our work and develop that, I think there will be a point in time, we will come back to the Board with that, with, and this is where the Board will have to determine your level of commitment, honestly, because many districts, as they have developed profiles and things, they have put in policy that a student cannot graduate if they have not earned that designation. And what I hear you saying is you would like to see a firm commitment, that it's non-negotiable, that students will receive these badges, we will teach to that, and to walk across that stage, they will have earned it, and it will be documented that they've earned it. And that would have to go into policy at that point in time as part of our graduation.
Okay, absolutely, because, and I will look forward to that conversation, because one of the things, as we discussed this and as we were building the profile for graduate, we looked at, you know, that postgraduate skills. Are they ready for this? Are they ready for that? Are they able to adapt in this situation? And in order for us to do that and to ensure that, when we compare our children from any other district, that they're meeting our minimum standards for graduating so that when they do get into situations and they're able to adapt, they're able to be good citizens, they're able to, you know, do all those wonderful things that we've put together in the profile. And so, to me, it really is non-negotiable. But, you know, we've got six other Board Members that definitely can weigh in, but those are my thoughts.
And I do think that'll be a really good conversation, once we get the framework built and we can really see what it means to move through the progression of learning. And then the Board can kind of determine if they, number one, if they want to put it in policy, and number two, if they do, where the cutoff would be. Would it be after participation or partnership? Or would it be the expectation that they get all the way to leadership?
Right.
But that's a conversation for further down the road.
Right. One is more or less, I met the basic standards, the other one, I've excelled in this particular competency, and so, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Helliger. Mrs. James.
Well, I just want to piggyback on what you said, Addie, because we, all those things are on the profile of a graduate for a reason. We didn't, we had all those attributes. We gathered them from the community, from the students, you know, from everybody involved, and there wasn't a single one that wasn't important that we put on that list. So, I'm kind of leaning where you are, like, it's kind of got to be a non-negotiable. And I think scaling it and finding where that cutoff is, is really important because, you know, we just don't know how that's going to work out. So, we'll look forward to more information as you kind of process through it. I want to comment on at least one other thing, and maybe the second thing will come back to me as I say the first thing. You mentioned, Mr. Byrne, about the not wanting to add burden to the teachers, and I really appreciate that because some people have said to me, some staff members have said, "This is a lot, and it feels a little bit overwhelming." So, I like how you're working on making all those connections into the existing curriculum, and maybe you'll find that there's some small things that can be switched out or switched around that would make even more parts of the profile of a graduate included in that. So, I really appreciate that. On your continuum that you, it wasn't this continuum, but you talked about, I guess, the first phase implementation as you're going to be developing that. Is that planned to have that first phase include all grade levels? Or are you just targeting certain grade levels for that initial Phase One plan?
That would target all grade levels. So, looking at the standards, how do we scale up from kinder all the way up to senior level? And what would that progression look like? And then the standards, what specifically would the student behavior indicators look like? How does that look in kinder versus third grade versus fifth grade, middle school, high school? And we want to develop those attributes in a very natural progression within our students so that we're building up those attributes, those characteristics, that core strength as they turn seventeen, eighteen years old.
Yeah, that's exciting, because it also goes back to our core belief in talking about student leadership development and how, the very outset, we talked about how we've got to develop our students as leaders. And this is, if we think about developing these attributes and encouraging them to be leaders amongst their peers with those attributes, it's very exciting to me. And I wrote this down and sent it in as a question, but I wanted to say it in this meeting, and that is, some of these things, it seems to me, fall naturally in the category of athletics or fine arts, clubs, service organizations, lots of existing extracurricular things we have going on, on our campuses. And it might turn into a way to incentivize some participation in some of those things, because we know that students are more engaged with school if they're engaged in an extracurricular activity. So, it seems to me that there's maybe a meshing of that that could happen that would benefit the kids holistically, but also just spread the variety of experiences that kids could participate in. So, thanks for, I know I sent that question, and thanks for answering that, and I think that's in your plans and in your thinking, but I didn't want to say it out loud tonight. So, thank you very much. This is very exciting. I agree with Ms. Helliger.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Do we have any other questions? Thank you very much. It's very exciting. Okay, moving on, next, we have our September 30, 2017 financial report.
Yes, ma'am. We're going to do a first quarter financial report. Later on in the agenda, you'll also be hearing a report from our auditors about our financial performance for the last year. But in this preliminary, this first report, we're going to just do a brief update on our quarter one financials and also revisit the idea of reappraisal of properties damaged by Hurricane Harvey. So, I'll turn it over to our CFO, Steve Bassett.
Thank you, sir. Madam President, members of the Board. So, we'll go through a few slides here talking about our financials and how we're doing so far. So, right now, from a budget perspective, our trajectory is on target. We are short a few students in relationship to PMS, but we do have some revenue items here that we are going to more than compensate for that. Our attendance is up overall. Now, that won't track at seventy-five, you know, .75% all year long. If we end up with .25%, that's something that we could be at, yes?
Mind pulling your mic a little bit closer?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm afraid they can't hear you on the video.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. So, we're tracking on our attendance. We're actually ahead of that, so hopefully that'll turn out well. We did have a one-time property value audit. We're going to receive a financial benefit of that of $1 million. Purdue Brandon and that firm, they do audit of the CPTD values on a regular basis, and so this is something that we'll be able to receive this year. That is a one-time benefit, though. One of the things that we are going to have on a recurring basis is an increase in our Medicaid revenue. If you remember, just a few months ago, we brought the MSB contract to you for SARS, a SARS provider, and we, you know, we feel like we're going to be able to be delivering on those, on the benefits of that new provider by having this additional amount. That'll be a recurring amount. The new instructional facility alignment is something that's in there. We will have that now [BLEEP]. Three new elementary schools and the second year of Sullivan, this coming year, it'll, whenever we go into the next year, you'll have the three new elementaries for one new year, and then we'll start having Thornton Middle School in the following year. If you look on the expense side... If you look on the expense side, one of the items we're bringing to the board tonight is for energy conservation. We've, you know, picked an energy consultant. The annual value of that, we're hoping to be worth at least 1.5 million. If we get started in earnest this coming semester, we're hoping to be able to save $500,000. You can see some of the other items not quite as material, but overall, if we were able to achieve all these, that would be a total of approximate $1.5 million if we were able to make these adjustments in the current year. So I got a couple of slides to address the reappraisal of property. We last spoke about this in September, when we had some initial information. So you can see here, we're the Glenn Whitehead's office, the County Appraisal District. He's requesting that any of the entities get their resolution set before December 1st in order to share costs with other entities. You can see before, this second bullet is unchanged with regard to if somebody went through the reappraisal process, it would count for one-third of the year, basically, if you think of the, because it's prorated based on the date, A27 being the date of the initial onset of Harvey. So its timing is approximately four months. When we last reported to you, we were reporting on a single entity basis, that if we did the reappraisal completely on our own, we'd be looking at a cost of $400,000 through the appraisal district. And at that time, we had a bill mailing estimate of $500,000. We've since learned that, because multiple entities are going to be going through this, our appraisal estimate is estimated to be between $200,000 and $250,000. But the better, the best news overall is that there would be no charge on the tax bill mailing. We're actually not given any indication that if any other entity joined us at the time, that we'd have such a reduction from 500 down to zero. That wasn't something that, that we learned about until, until just a few days ago. So we did get some numbers, so that's from a cost perspective, you can see that, you know, up to $250,000. We did get some numbers on what the, what it would actually mean from a property value perspective. And so Glenn Whitehead has estimated that 40, up to 4,300 properties would be subject to the reappraisal, with almost 1.5 billion in market value impacted. He is estimating that the loss to the district from a value perspective would be 511 million. That's at a rate of 35%, okay? So that's, that's that ratio there. If we're running that loss, the potential loss in collections, loss in local collections would be 1.2 million to the, to the general fund, to the M&amp;O fund. But the state penalizes you, whenever you're running things through the state funding calculation, if you don't collect as much as they think you should be collecting, then your state funding actually is reduced. Now, we might be able to recover that in the following year if the CPTD went, went down, but that is something that, that we would have to bear in the near term. The revenue loss to the interest and sinking fund or debt service would be $300,000 if all of that 500 million in property value was, was realized. Now, I did asterisk both those two things, and these are things that have been discussed by the commissioner in terms of the state being able to make up those dollars, but we don't know the timeframe for that. We don't know if and when that would actually happen. There's, but they definitely have discussed those, those things. So what would happen if the, I know you guys are going to be speaking about this in close session. If the board authorized the reappraisal, we'd take action on it next week. The homeowners would then receive notifications of the reappraisal from the appraisal district. Then they'd work on fieldwork, they'd determine the new values, corrected bills would be mailed. There'd be its own protest window, just like we have a protest window for, for the regular values earlier in the year. And then after they get through that, then actual refund checks would be issued. And that's all we have on this, on this update. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett. We have questions from the trustees. Mr. Rice?
So, Mr. Bassett, when we talked about this in September, it seemed that the impact to us was $900,000.
Yes, sir.
Since that time, we've learned, what other entities are considering moving forward with this?
The other entities that have already adopted resolutions that, that impact these numbers for us is the Fort Bend County, the City of Sugar Land, and also Katy ISD.
Okay. So if we do that, then who's paying for the mailing?
The mailing, the way it works out is that the county's paying for that.
The county's paying for the mailing?
Yes, sir.
So our costs go from $900,000 to $250,000?
Yes, sir.
For the, for the cost of this reappraisal?
The actual process, that's right.
And then we're looking at a loss, a revenue loss to the general fund of 1.7. How long do we think it's going to take everybody to get their homes repaired?
Well, I mean, that's, that's hard to say, but...
It's four months for this year, but it might extend into next year, too.
It's very possible that that could happen, and anything, anything that didn't get fully repaired would have a lower value January 1st, regardless of whatever action the board would take. I can tell you just anecdotally, you know, I drive through Riverstone on a daily basis, and when I look at those, those areas, they're, they're looking, you know, pretty good. There's always contractors there, but there's, there's a lot of work that's being done on those homes.
Okay, and then when, so if we do this now, when, when are the appraisals going to be made for 2018? When do we catch up?
Okay, so what would happen? Are you talking about the properties that would get looked at again?
Yes.
Okay, those properties, they would start with fieldwork, and they would commence with that as soon as, as soon as possible. They're already, they've already been working in other areas, in other parts of the county already. And so they would begin the fieldwork immediately, and they would work to determine those values as quickly as possible. But it could, I mean, it's going to take a few months, for sure.
Okay, and then one last question. I understand the Commissioner of Education is looking into this, but I don't think that he has the authority to grant us a reprieve. That's legislature's, is that correct?
Well, what he has is that he has the ability to move funds from the second half of the biennium into the first half of the biennium. And by the time the second biennium will be going, that's when the legislator will be in session again in 2019.
Okay.
And so he does have some latitude, but I do think some, eventually some kind of legislative help would be needed.
How confident, or what are our chances of them actually coming through with this?
Oof, goodness. Dr. Dupree, I mean, you've heard him speak a couple of times, I mean, I have, I mean...
It's politics, honestly, and we're dealing with a House and a Senate that are struggling to work effectively together, and, but the Commissioner has, he's given every indication, I mean, he's been clear, he will dig into his reserves to do what he needs to do, and then put it back in the hands of the legislators in the next session. So he's, on many levels, to keep districts hold harmless, he's expressed his desire and intent to do that.
One reason why I am optimistic along these lines is that these are one-time costs. And so they've never been willing to go into the rainy day fund to fund ongoing things, you know, to, to fund schools, but clearly, these are, these are one-time costs, and just, you know, caused by a very rainy day.
One last question, Mr. Bassett. How confident do we, are we in the chief appraisers' information here on the 4,300 property accounts and the $1.4 billion in market value? I mean, is he going to, are we going to get another surprise?
Well, I, I think if we were in September, I would be less confident, but because he's already been working on this for the county for 45-plus days, and they've already been taking a look at, at a number of properties, I think he's using that a similar ratio. And so I, I think we're going to be pretty close to these numbers.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. I'll just add to that, I attended the Senate Education Hearing this afternoon, this morning and this afternoon, and it may even still be going on. It's at, was held at the U of H Hilton in Houston today. I heard Commissioner Murath testify. He was first up to testify. Like Dr. Dupree said, he was very encouraging about a hold harmless, and he was encouraging the senators to consider a special appropriation, which is what the legislature would have to do in order to hold us harmless for this 1.7 million in revenue loss to the general fund and the $300,000 in the INS. So he did ask the senators to be considering that, and there wasn't a lot of comments or conversation about that amongst the senators, but at least Commissioner Murath was asking them to do that. They did not discuss reimbursement or a hold harmless for the cost of reappraisal. That's one of the things I think Dr. Dupree asked the House Committee to consider. I did not hear any discussion about that today among the senators. One of the things that Commissioner Murath talked quite a bit about is the lag, because we're, as you guys know, we're a year behind typically in, in the state catching up to what we have collected or haven't collected. He talked quite a bit about that lag and about school districts needing the money because of the, because of the lag. He also talked about, he talked about the cost escalations for, for districts such as transportation, busing, the bus driver shortage that, particularly in the affected area, is, is enduring right now, the overtime, the tutoring, those types of things. He talked quite a bit about that. And he did say that the state probably has about six to eight months, by his estimates, before we know exactly what the state's exposure will be, meaning how much will the state have to come up with to hold all the districts harmless. So he seemed to think it would be another six to eight months, not only because of all the reappraisals that are going on, but we have about 52,000 families who are living in FEMA-supported housing, whether it be hotels or FEMA trailers, and that's about to end. So when, I think in December, that's about to end. So where are those 52,000 families going to end up? How is that going to impact enrollment in the various districts? So there's really a lot still up in the air. He estimated that the impact could be maybe shy of $1 billion, but that's, was the estimate he gave today. So that's just an update on what Commissioner Murath is talking to the, at least talked to the Senate Education Committee about today. So hopefully, they will be willing to make the special appropriation, whether they have to dig into the rainy day fund or not. Are there other questions or comments, Mrs. James?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Tosan. So there's two categories, it seems to me, of this. One is the, that I think I've heard the Commissioner talk about, and one is kind of the facilities piece, and facilities that were damaged and capital improvements that have, or renovations that have to take place because of damage. And then the other is, and maybe in that same category, would be loss of instructional materials and things like that. This is, this is almost a different category, because it's, it's the revenue stream, it's an interruption in the revenue stream. So I, I see how the sale can be made pretty well for the facilities and the instructional materials and things like that, but I think it, just listening to you talk, it seems like the political sell on the, on the revenue stream is a little more difficult. Do we have any idea, I'm looking at you, but I don't expect you to know the answer, do we have any idea of how many other school districts are, look, she, she might have it, how many other school districts are doing reappraisals of their property? We know Katy is, is HIS D, Spring Branch.
Conroe has. I know Conroe has.
Okay.
Those are the ones that have stepped up for now, but the other, others are considering, and there was some discussion about that today.
Well, certainly some of those to the south, Rockport and...
Right.
Those, Fulton and those areas must be doing it, too. And those are some really small districts, which, okay, so...
They are, they talk, some of those were there today, some of those superintendents were there today, and they, they are discussing doing that. I don't know that it's been brought to their boards yet, but there was a lot of conversation about it. I think the expectation is that many of them will, if not all.
Okay, and so, did, did the Commissioner speak particularly to the revenue, the interruption in revenue stream, or was his, or his hold harmless comments more general?
No, he was very specific. In fact, it probably would be helpful to get his presentation, which I'm sure he would give us, I just didn't have an opportunity to talk to him before I left. But he had several slides that were very specific about the hold, about the revenue stream, and a lot of conversation. I mean, he had graphs trying to show them what the lag actually looks like, and the impact that it's going to have on districts, particularly, really not so much this school year, but next school year and beginning in 2019, because that's really when it's going to all catch up. And so he talked quite a bit about that, and how the state, he hopes, will step in and help these districts, so...
Well, and I guess that's particularly true for rent, for repairs that aren't completed by the first of the year, when the new appraisal season starts, right? So, you know, and that's, that's a risk for us that we can do nothing about. What's, what's, what we're talking about right now is just this, this short-term piece, and when we, when we already have a budget that's got over a $12 million deficit, it's hard to...
So I'll just, one thing I'll read you from my notes, just to give you an indication. Commissioner Murath said, you know, basically, the school districts will go to the insurance companies first to see what they can get from insurance. This is from a facility standpoint. FEMA next, and then the state can hold ISDs harmless if a special appropriation is made by the state. And just by example, one of the few comments I heard even in response to this, Senator Huffine says, "We're encouraging under or uninsured ISDs to get insured," no, "we're encouraging them to not be insured because the state will pick up the bill." Senator Huffine said that. And Commissioner Murath said that TEA has no statutory authority to enforce, to force districts to get insurance. So the conversation was about insurance. Commissioner Murath was trying to talk about the hold harmless and sort of the process, and there was a lot of focus on whether districts are insured, whether they should be insured, and whether a law should be passed requiring them to get insured, so that the state does not get, quote, "stuck paying it." That was part of the conversation around that. So I'm not sure what, my hope is that the senators will come together and work with the House, and that our leaders, our governor and our lieutenant governor will step up and make sure that school districts, because it's really the kids, it's not us, it's the kids, it's about the kids, will have the resources that they need in order to meet all of the obligations, one of which is accountability, which Commissioner Murath said that two out of three of the affected districts asked, said that they wanted to continue with the current testing schedule and not an alternate testing schedule. And it's my understanding, and Dr. Dupree, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we're one of the ones that just said we would like to continue with the current schedule, because it would cause a lot of problems, and we don't have enough teachers to go with the alternate schedule, and it interferes with summer. But the problem is, is that there was no conversation about whether or not the grades would be put out based on the testing, the STAR testing, given that our students are now being crammed into this timetable, this existing timetable. And Senator Van Taylor did make the comment that, you know, will the reduction in instruction time lead to lower test scores? Because of course, the more you study, the higher score you tend to get. So there was concern expressed by at least one of our senators that this was going to impact test scores and therefore impact school districts. But that was the only conversation that was really had about the accountability portion, and whether districts would have to still be under that regulatory burden.
Okay, well, thank you for that report, and thank you for going to that hearing. That, that sounds like the... That, that sounds like there was a lot of interesting things discussed there and/or brought up by the commissioner. And I'm hopeful that the Senate Education Committee as a start and the Senate as a whole can try to be big-picture thinkers and think in a visionary way about the future of the Texas, of Texas children, and particularly those in, in the impacted school districts, because it's no small feat. It was no small feat to get back to school in the two weeks it took us to do it. We still have kids that are displaced. We still have entire, you know, schools that aren't back in session, and, and our neighboring districts have, have the same thing. So I'd be curious, Dr. Dupree, for information on how many school districts are in the same situation as, that we are in? I don't know if that's, if we should look at the counties that were considered the state of emergency or...
Sixty.
Sixty counties, but how many, how many school districts and how many students are we talking about in that?
1.9 million public education students, and 1.4 million were directly impacted by the storm.
Okay. So that's, I guess, really is a third of the students. It's a lot. But the question is, is that enough to sway the legislature to take action? And my confidence level is low.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Do we have any other comments or questions from the trustees? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bassett. Before we convene in closed session, I, I skipped over our silent invocation. And so, given the tragedy in Sutherland Springs on Sunday, I'd like to take a few moments, if you guys will indulge me, and have a moment of silence. And let's just remember to keep the victims and their families in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. We will now convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, those sections listed in the agenda, and for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law. We are now convening in closed session.